Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We're going to open with a prayer from Pastor Nicole Martin from Messiah Lutheran Church, followed by a pledge led by General Queen. Please rise.
Grace and peace be to you all. How often do you consider the word household? In Greek, it is called an oikos, but it has three distinct related parts: people, place, and shelter. But what a lot of people do not know is that oikos or eco in English is also the root for economy and ecology. So it can be argued that an oikos is people, place, shelter, care of finances, and care of relationships would bind all of these things together. So this is what I come here to pray for today, the oikos of Panama City. Let us pray. Alpha and Omega, while it may be called a city, or a large town, or even a conglomerate of people, what we are first is an oikos of your creation, full of vibrant people who have known trauma and joy, a location defended by the radiance... A location defined by the radiance of coastal waters, offering shelter to the young and old, multitudes of faith expressions, backgrounds, ethnicities, and economic flavors. The leaders of this oikos, Creator God, are gathered here today to tend to these relationships, these policies, the ordinances, and the finances that help keep the oikos of Panama City safe and healthy. Be with them, Source of Wisdom, so their decisions they make strengthen and nourish the oikos of Panama City. Let their words not just be right, but offer encouragement and blessings, so that through their work, relationships and people can be blessed and empowered to live as faithful and dedicated members of this community. When there is an injustice that harms even one person, let that injustice be swiftly corrected, so justice can prevail for all. Ten compassionate protector to the utility workers, first responders, and administrative support, especially as we round the corner to hurricane season. From the mayor to underground and lift stations, from the street sweeper to the city manager and everyone in between, be with them all, protect and provide for them. But most of all, on this day, we lift up the city council, give them courage, tenacity, diligence, a sharp mind, a gentle tongue, and wisdom dashed with a discerning spirit to lead this oikos we call Panama City in a way that seeks to protect, support, raise up all the beautiful people under their care. With money, let them be good financial stewards. With property, help them create, rebuild, restore, renew infrastructure, homes, businesses, rec centers, and playgrounds. With relationships, guide them to be a bridge builder to unite all people for the support of all people. On this day, this is what we offer, Creator God, the great I Am, the Word of Life, the breath of our existence. Build blessings for your people through those gathered here today, so that Panama City radiates as a leader in caring for its economy, its ecology, and its people. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Bernicki.
I'm here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Good, we've got the minutes from the April 26 meeting. Everyone had a chance to read those, any additions, deletions. Entertain a motion to accept as presented.
Good morning, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the minutes and pass the minutes from the April 26, 2022 City Commission meeting.
Second motion, Mayor.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
We have one addition that I know of, unless you have more, General, for special events permit.
Yes, sir.
And I think we'll do that right before unfinished business.
That'll be fine.
Those guys, is that right? The Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. The members of Panama City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Panama City. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that these brave officers are recognized for their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by shielding the innocent from deception and the weak from oppression. The men and women of Panama City Police Department provide a vital public service every hour of every day. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bernicki, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of City Panama City, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 to the 21st as Police Week throughout the city of Panama City, and can call upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Thank you.
Commissioner Rader.
No.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. We have an appointment to the Panama City Port Authority, and we are going to delay Okay, we have appointments to the Panama City Port Authority, and we are going to delay that for two weeks. that for two weeks. Is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Okay.
We continue to receive applications for that. We continue to receive applications for that.
Right. Right.
And we believe that we should cut that off today. And we believe that we should cut that off today. We've had a number of applicants, very qualified citizens, and I think that will give the We've had a number of applicants, very qualified citizens, and I think that will give the Commission time to assess those applicants as we consider those appointments for the Commission time to assess those applicants as we consider those appointments for the future. future.
Okay, so do we need a motion to move that two weeks, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, so do we need a motion to move that two weeks, Mr. City Attorney?
I believe that'd be appropriate. I believe that'd be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. Your motion? Your motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Your second? Your second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Call the roll. Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
No.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay. We have an appointment to the Panama City Bay County Airport Authority. And we have one applicant who has served us very well. He's also a pretty good fisherman.
He's one of the best.
Mr. Glenn McDonald.
He's sitting out there just grinning from ear to ear.
Yeah, he's right there.
Hey, Glenn. Okay.
He usually say nice things.
Yeah.
He thought he'd come and listen.
Mayor, could I make that motion?
Mr. McDonald, would you come forward, please, sir? Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else want to do it? Anybody?
You might want to do it.
No.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glenn is currently a member and wishes to remain on the board, and he has done a terrific job. And so, without any further ado, do I hear a motion to accept Mr. McDonald?
I love that we brought him up here.
I want to make the motion.
Yeah, we want... I want him to...
I was hoping he was in the face.
I want to vote him in, and then he can talk.
Yeah, I want to make the motion, because I remember talking to him years ago.
All right, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I'm grateful and thankful. Thank you all.
That's a boy, Glenn. I love it.
Thank you, Glenn.
He currently serves as the chairman of that board, and will continue to do so with this appointment.
Very good.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDonald.
Mayor, I'd like to just say one thing, and I've said it before. Anybody that serves on any of our boards, I'm thankful for that, because that's above and beyond. They're doing the special duties for their city, because they love their city. And regardless of who it is, it's a blessing to all of us to have people.
Yes, thank you for donating your time.
I mean that.
Okay, community announcements. Dads Row teamed up with Palmetto Paint PC to bring the fine arts over to the ladies of Senior Living Program. Senior Living Program meets every Thursday at Oakland Terrace Clubhouse from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00. As part of the Retree PC effort, City Panama City hosted a National Arbor Day Tree Care Workshop and giveaway April 29th. Out at Oakland Terrace Park, 34 Panama City residents signed up for the workshop and received a free seven-gallon winged elm tree to take home in exchange for their participation. The Tupelo Beekeepers Association, along with Living Healthy Simplified, hosted an interactive field day at Kid Harris Community Food Forest Saturday, April 30th. Upwards of 50 people turned out to learn backyard beekeeping basics to include hive management and honey extraction. Where should I pin it? May is known nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month. Come out to Davenport, May 21st, for a family-friendly gathering of resources supporting those affected by substance abuse and mental health challenges. This event runs from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. and is brought to you by the folks over at Bay of Hope. Also on Saturday, May 21st, join us at Carl Gray Park, located at Collegiate Drive in Panama City, for live music, food trucks, and fun at the inaugural Tess Strong Food Truck Festival. There is no entry fee for this event. 10% of all vendor proceeds go to benefit Mothers Against Drunk Driving of Northwest Welcome to the Year of the Tiger. Dads Row, Panhandle, and City of Panama City are excited to announce the inaugural Asian American Pacific Islander Festival. Discover Asia downtown at McKenzie Park, May 21st, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. Explore Asian and Pacific Island culture with an evening filled with arts and crafts, music and dance, plants, and exotic cuisine. This fun-filled virtual day trip to the Orient is something the whole family sure to love. Calling all teens, our next Teen Tuesday Paint Night takes place, May 31st, out at Frank Nelson Clubhouse. Join us on the last Tuesday of each month to create step-by-step canvases, co-hosted by Palmetto Paint PC. Admission is free. The fun begins at 6:00 p.m. Parents, you are encouraged to participate with your child. Lot of good stuff. Okay. At this time, we have audience participation. First person on there is Derek Thomas.
Good morning. Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I'd like to bring to your attention the next thing on your agenda, 7A, the ordinance 3060. If it's a nuisance abatement...
Mr. Thomas.
If that's on the agenda, you talk about it then. It's not during audience participation.
Let me get to that number.
Okay. Well, it was already up here.
Yeah, no problem. That's okay. You got something else?
Yeah, the code enforcement issues, that's... I know that there was one from a few weeks back that was... They would charge $4,000. They had to mow their lawn, but they didn't take care of the stuff growing through the chain link fence. And right across the street from my house is a four-foot deep ditch that has weeds growing up higher than the chain link fence. It's hurricane season's coming around. It used to be a large area for the water to gather, right across the street. I brought it up with the streets and everything else, and it just... It doesn't... That and the cables all over the sidewalks and on the grass on the side of the road that keep getting run over by the lawn mowers. The code enforcement is saying that that's not their agenda right now, that it's all, you know, single-family houses and stuff like that. I know right across from 19th Street and the elementary school there, there was one that was still listed on Zillow as over $400,000 property, and they got nothing after they demolished it, and the fines were paid. Now, Buccaneer property had over $50,000 for, you know, growth exceeding one foot in height, and 90% of it is covered with concrete. But right across the street, there's what used to be a functioning drainage ditch, which is no longer anything but a mess of weeds, and it just doesn't seem like the priorities for getting, you know, city back up and running and making it possible for the people to clear the sidewalks and the area next to the sidewalks. If there's a bunch of cables that you can't do that, you have to mow around it, you have to just leave it there until it gets overgrown to the point where it's just ridiculous. So if you're going to go after some people for that and charge them huge amounts of money, then it just doesn't seem right that you're not prioritizing the drainage that is necessary for people's neighborhoods to function properly and for their property not to be flooded in case of a hurricane. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Go on. I think Jennifer Yonker, but you're sensitive with your agenda. Good, all right. Nevin?
Thank you. First item I have is final reading of ordinance 3060 for emergency declarations and nuisances. The letter is unchanged from what you saw two weeks ago, and as you were advised two weeks ago today, will be the final reading of attached ordinance 3060, and it establishes guidelines for making emergency declarations. It talks about civil emergencies, allows the mayor or a city manager to make limited, focused determinations of emergency as it might relate to a club. And so this is consistent with what Panama City Beach has done. I know Bay County also, I believe, adopted something similar a couple of weeks ago. And then, an item that relates to pop-up events will be coming next week for the first... Or two weeks for the first reading, and that was taken out of the ordinance two weeks ago. So the request is to have a public hearing, and then staff is recommending adoption of this ordinance.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to address us on this issue?
Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. If you want to make noise an issue, then that's great. I have no problem with that. I think that it's a better deterrent if people actually know about it. If somebody gets stopped by a police and the police officer has to explain what the rule is and everything else. I know there's a website, I brought this up at the Bay County meeting, and there is a website you can go look on it if you could announce that. But if you... There was only one article in the News Herald before they went out of business, and that's it. I mean, I don't know, a lot of people older than me don't really want to get online, and a lot of people younger than me don't want to read the newspaper, but it would work better, I think, if everybody had a clear understanding of what the rule was. They brought up a decibel level at a certain distance. I think that's a great idea. Everybody can understand it's a certain number. It's not somebody saying, "Oh, I... It's loud music," or "It was offensive to me." If it's a specific number, then that's easy to understand, but you need to give an example of what that decibel level sounds like, so that somebody who doesn't know what decibel levels sound like would be able to understand it. I think that if it's going to be an effective deterrent, people have to know about it before they get pulled over by the police, and the police shouldn't have to be there explaining the rules to them. The public should know. It's like a seatbelt. If everybody knows you use half the weight of your seatbelt, you get a ticket. So if they understand what this is, then they're much more likely to comply and not feel that they're being singled out. You guys come up with new rules every couple of years, and so this is very high turnover rate. If you just would make it possible for the public to understand what the rule is, I think it'd be much better deterrent for everybody. Thank you.
Mayor, my mission...
Okay. Anybody else want to address us on this issue? Your motion on ordinance 3060.
Mayor, I'd like to move approval of it, and if anybody wants to discuss it, that's fine. I'd like to make the motion, and then I'd like to say something at the end of it.
Your second?
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion. Call the roll. Oh, go ahead.
I'd just like to remind the commissioners that there will... A portion of this ordinance was pulled out, and it will be coming in two weeks, and that has relates to pop-up events.
Well, I want to thank staff. I want to thank our police chief. I want to thank you, Mayor, and the owners of all the venues in town that this affected or could have affected more. Everybody came together and compromised and worked together in one accord, and that's what it's all about, folks, coming together. Communication is what it is. But I wanted to thank the people that were involved in creating this, because it's not a big drastic difference, but it does help things in the event of an emergency. That's what it does. And I know one thing, our chief is well-trained. He's been here a long time, and so he remains calm and cool, and he enforces that to our officers, and I'm grateful for that. Same way with Mr. McQueen, with his experience as a general, and Mayor, I feel the same way about you, with your experience in life. That's what it's all about, remaining calm, cool, and collected. And I'm not trying to overtalk it, but I am just thankful that we have those kind of people in leadership, and I just wanted to say that. So, thank you.
We appreciate that. Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Next item is...
You didn't read it.
I'd like to read the title. Thank you. The title is for ordinance 3060, "An Ordinance of the City of Panama City, Florida, Amending the City's Code of Ordnances to Establish a New Chapter 25 Related to Emergency Declarations, Providing Definitions, Providing for Declarations of Emergency, Authorizing Measures to Address the Emergency, Providing for the File, Publication, Duration, and Scope of Emergency Orders, Providing for Advanced Emergency Declaration Measures, Providing Penalties and Enforcement, Amending Chapter 3 of the City's Code to Include Definitions, Providing for Regulation in Commercial Parking Lots, Amending Chapter 12 of the City's Code to Include a Nuisance Definition, Repealing All Ordnances or Parts of Ordnances in Conflict, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, and Providing an Immediately Effective Date." The next item is staff's request to approve state revolving funds project task orders pursuant to contracts that the City Commission has already entered into. The city was able to secure a state revolving fund loan of $115 million, and pursuant to that, there's a process. The City Commission hired two lead engineers and also hired, I believe, 15 general engineers, all for this task of doing SRF projects. What you have before you is the first group of design work for 11 different engineering firms for 11 different areas. And I've listed who all the engineering firms are in the letter. These task orders are not contracts in the sense that the task orders are pursuant to the contracts you've already approved, and those were approved back in October, but it is a significant launch of this needed water and sewer project. So the request is that you approve all of these task orders, and the engineers will get to work.
Your motion on 7B?
I'll make a motion. Second motion, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor, for your benefit, as well as the Commission and our citizens, this represents 10 of the 30 areas that we are under pursuit on with the state revolving fund. In addition to that, coming at our next Commission meeting will be the task orders for the 13 critical lift stations, as well as Area A2, as well as the Millville area that was approved by the CDBGDR that the governor approved those funds for. So there's a significant amount of engineering that's taking place across the city to serve our citizens better with regard to our utilities. So looking forward to presenting that to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. For the color. Thank you. Next item is a request to approve a lease of the St. Andrews School Pavilion for the Governor Stone rebuild project. The Friends of the Governor Stone, Inc. is a not-for-profit entity, and they obtained a FEMA grant to rebuild the Governor Stone, a historic landmark. Also, the Stone Loft Boat Shop, Inc. is a not-for-profit entity that's actually doing the work on this project. Commissioner Street and I met with the group a few weeks ago, and the desire is to lease, short-term lease, up to two years, the St. Andrews School Pavilion. The actual... I noticed that Exhibit A, it shows where the fencing is, and it didn't show up for a while, but the fencing will be around the pavilion all the way to Beck Avenue, and then a third or more of the basketball court. Within that will be the exclusive use of the Friends of Governor Stone. They can... The workers and all, of course, have not exclusive use to park and to do other things there at St. Andrews School. This should not conflict at all with the redesign work that's going on or the rebuild work going on at St. Andrews School. And the terms of the lease, it's a dollar a year, or $10 for the two years, and the city will provide the fence and will also provide the monthly, up to like $100 a month toward power cost. And it is also geared toward tourism, which is important, because under the city's lease from Bay County, since tourism dollars were involved in the acquisition of the school, this is also will promote tourism, and I have shown this to the county attorney's office, which saw no conflict between this and our lease with the county.
Josh?
This is exciting. So I know some of you guys are here today. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything before we vote, but excited to see the work actually begin on the Governor Stone.
Hi, my name's Anderson Barnes. I'm the president of the Stone Loft, where the contractor is going to be rebuilding the boat, and I just wanted to say thank you to the community for having the vision to elect such great commissioners, to have the future of this county and this town and city in mind, and the Governor Stone is going to be a great thing for the community. It's part of our history. So I really thank you guys and thank the community for helping this come to fruition. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have the opportunity to recommend approval, because I had a very dear friend of mine was involved with it.
Okay. All right. Where's the motion?
I'd love to second your motion.
Go ahead.
I'm Colleen Riley. I'm the current president of the Governor Stone, and I just have to say thank you to all of you. You've been a huge supporter individually and as a group of the Governor Stone for many, many years. And I don't know if you all were aware of how close we really were to not being able to do this. As recently as February sixth, we had our annual members meeting, and I went into that meeting expecting to tell everyone the worst because we had not found a shipbuilder. We had not located a property to rebuild her. We had finally raised the money and the city at the very end was wonderful in pushing us to that point with a donation. And it was just divine intervention that when we put the word out, this is our last chance, we found Anderson Barnes, who created Stone Loft, to make this happen. And then we found out that the school property was available, and we started talking with you all. We were very afraid that we were going to have to send it to Maine or somewhere else out of our area. And we didn't want to do that because she's vital to the history as a Gulf Coast schooner. And she's vital to our present as well because we want to be able to teach the children how to tie knots and how to build. And we're going to open it up to the community there at the school so that people can not only see history being rebuilt for the future, but also they can put their hands on it. They can pick up a piece of sandpaper and help out. So I just have to say thank you to all of you. And this is going to be a very exciting two-year period to get her rebuilt and get her on the water. And you'll see lots of good things that we're going to involve you guys in to make sure that you get your hands on it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your passion and dedication.
All right, so we got a motion and second?
Thank you, Josh.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we have a, didn't have a consent agenda, but we do have one item that we added, and this is for a special events permit.
Yes, sir. This will be a request for provisional special event permit for the road to music experience to be held at destination Panama City on the twenty-first of May of this year.
Okay. Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second motion.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
That's a term I've not heard of.
Are we, isn't eight A being deferred?
Yes, sir. The request is that we defer that till the twelfth of July, the regularly scheduled meeting of the city commission. This is an area that is one of those that was approved just by the board a few moments ago with regard to the design and engineering in it. So before the commission can act on it, we're requesting that the engineering be complete and the construction done before we act on item eight A. So with that, my request is that we continue item eight A until the twelfth of July.
Motion to defer eight A, please.
That's good to me.
If that's a motion, I'll second. Commissioner Halagus is a motion.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to defer passes five zero.
So with that, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I draw your attention to item nine A, which is the consideration of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBGDR, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match for the sub-recipient agreement for the utility building Safe Room Project Phase One and the corresponding budget amendment resolution number two zero two two zero five one zero point one. As background information, on the sixteenth of December, twenty twenty-one, the City of Panama City was awarded the CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for the utility Safe Room Project. Sub-recipient agreement is from the state of Florida and is the non-federal local cost share of twenty-five percent, which is of the phase one design portion of the two-phase project, which will amount to a total of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. But that's my recommendation that we move forward and accept the sub-recipient agreement and execute that accordingly.
Motion on nine A?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
I think Mr. Zimmerman will read the resolution.
Thank you. The resolution is twenty twenty-two oh five one oh point one, a resolution providing for the amendment of approved fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget for the maintenance of a hazard mitigation grant program match for a city of Panama City utility safe room. Item nine B is a consideration of the approval of the voluntary home buyout local prioritization criteria revision. These criteria will be used to evaluate, score, and select eligible homes that have been completed, completed their pre-registration requirements and the associated documentation for the voluntary home buyout program. As background information, on August sixteenth of twenty twenty-one, the Department of Economic Opportunity notified the city that the buyout values will be determined using the fair market value. As you may recall, the, the DEO awarded five million dollars to the city to be able to affect this program. Previously, the buyout value was only limited to the pre-disaster hurricane market, fair market value. However, we were able to secure post-hurricane Michael values as being the basis for the appraisals. The total amount of the funding awarded for the voluntary home buyout remains capped at five million dollars, resulting in insufficient funding available to acquire all of the pre-registered properties. As a result, the revision of the local prioritization scoring criteria is going to be needed. Having said that, I have gone back forward, and the mayor and I have co-authored and, and signed a letter requesting Director Eagle to award the additional five million dollars that will be needed to be able to purchase all thirty-seven properties that have been applied for the voluntary home buyout program. With that, it's my recommendation that we
accept the revised criteria, screening criteria for the voluntary home buyout program.
Your motion on nine B?
I'll make a motion. Second motion, mayor.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask one, just one question. Somebody else was going to speak first. Minister McQueen, it says it will, it will remain capped at five million, but, but that's more than what it used to be. I mean, at, at the beginning, wasn't it?
The original request, based on the criteria that DEO provided to us, which was based on pre-hurricane Michael appraisals, we requested seven point two million dollars. Of that, the city received an award of five million dollars, and we identified the unmet need at that time. Since then, we're very grateful the DEO revised its rules to allow for post-hurricane Michael fair market values and appraisals. With that, that now means that the program cost is going to be roughly ten million dollars.
That's a great thing.
With that, we have gone back. The mayor and I have requested that to Director Eagle to ensure that we try to meet the unmet need for this particular program.
I just want, kind of want to make that clear for everybody to understand.
We've been approved, we've been approved for five million. We haven't gotten the five million yet. So we're asking for another five, but we haven't received any. I know I've had calls from people, and we still haven't gotten the money, any of the money.
That's right. This is a reimbursable program. So it is one that we will, once the, everything is in line, we've already initiated the environmental assessments. We've already completed the appraisals. And now this is going to be breaking down that subject area into three different phases. Phase one is fully funded, and this criteria will allow us to delineate phase two and phase three.
I'm thankful we have it. We welcome them.
I just can't say enough to the staff and what they've done. I mean, I, I believe that this program, that they've been a part in shaping, is going to become a model that will be used around the country. I really do think that.
That was going to be my only question. I know that you were deep into that, and I assume since you moved the motion that you're happy with how all this is.
Well, I'm, I'm not happy we can't buy all the houses that ultimately want to buy, but I, I do think it's fair that they receive fair market value for their houses. And so if that's less people, it's better to make a few people whole than everyone partially.
Some of these have been flooded like four times.
It's a need, and I, I certainly hope the state agrees.
I do want to thank Ms. Aldridge and her incredible work, as well as our team Hagerty that have been assisting in this effort. So, that's right. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Henry.
Walter P. Henry, six fourteen, Eighth Avenue, Panama City. What I'm going to say probably is not going to stop you with your vote. What you're doing is for great, but I hope somebody go profit off of it, who, who houses is y'all going to give, that they're going to have enough money to go somewhere and rebuild. Too much prize, prize gouging is going on around since Michael, since the virus. And y'all might not feel like that. Like I said before, folks have heard it. Everybody needs, y'all building houses, seeing houses built, nobody's touching them, look like. It should, that should give us a message. Something need to be done, you know? I know sometimes we say we are helping people, but sometime we're not going, we're not going for enough. We're not looking at ourselves. We're not thinking about others as well as we're thinking about ourselves. It look like it's more concerned about us than it is about somebody that is really hurting, have been hurting for these probably five years now. And look like it's, you know, it's nothing happening. Folks are still, they need, not able to afford it. It's too much prize gouging. I know that. Everybody look at it and they start it. The first thing they do, start raising things. Gas is going up. Every time you look at it, everybody want to say it's a reason, want to put it on somebody else. No. We letting folk do things that shouldn't be done. Unto the government, we'll, we'll just let stuff happen. Nobody's just sitting down and, and not looking at it, thinking about it. It shouldn't happen. But I'm just saying to you, to you, you know, why you want to build a house just sitting there and nobody's not buying it? Nobody's not interested. You're putting money out, and you're not getting money you're going to put out? It's not receiving anything back from it.
It's frustrating at the federal level. I think that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the high gas either.
Yeah. That's what's happened.
Okay, so we already voted on nine B?
No, we have a motion and a second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item nine C is the approval of the Sweet Bay Phase Two plat. As background information, in November of twenty eleven, the City of Panama City approved a PUD master plan in which the seven hundred acre planned unit development would be developed through multiple phases over the following twenty years. In February of twenty fourteen, City, Panama City approved preliminary plat and development order to install the infrastructure for the subdivision. The St. Andrews Bay Land Company now submits the plat for Phase Two D of the Sweet Bay subdivision for approval and acceptance by the City of Panama City. This was, item was reviewed by the planning board on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, my recommendation, we move forward with the approval of the Sweet Bay Phase Two D plat.
Your motion on nine C?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move approval of nine C, Sweet Bay, Phase Two D.
Your second?
Second motion, mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just like to point out that there is a thirty-seven thousand dollar letter of credit that will be posted to cover the sodding and a little bit of signage and striping after completion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I draw your attention to section ten, which will be the first readings of a number of items that are part of the public hearing. With that, draw your attention to item ten A, which is the first reading of ordinance three zero six one point one, the voluntary annexation of point five zero seven acres of property located at twenty-five oh three West Thirty-third Street. As background information, the applicant is requesting annexation to the city in order to utilize its city services. The item was reviewed by the planning board on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's recommendation we conduct the first reading of the annexation.
First reading of ordinance thirty sixty-one point one, "An Ordinance of the City Approving the Voluntary Annexation of Point Five Oh Seven Acres of Unincorporated Property Located at Twenty-five Oh Three West Thirty-third Street, Bay County, Florida, to the city as further defined herein after amending the wards and boundaries of the city to include said land and providing for an effective date."
Item ten B is the first reading of ordinance three zero six one point two, "Amending the Future Land Use Map of the City to Reflect a Land Use Designation of Residential for the Property Located at Twenty-five Oh Three West Thirty-third Street." As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance thirty sixty-one point two, "An Ordinance Amending the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map of the City to Reflect a Land Use Designation of Residential for a Parcel of Property Located at Twenty-five Oh Three West Thirty-third Street, Panama City, Florida, Providing for a Repealer, Severability, and Effective Date."
Item ten C is the first reading of ordinance three zero six one point three, "Amending the Zoning Map of the City to Reflect a Zoning Designation of Residential One, R One, for the Property Located at Twenty-five Oh Three West Thirty-third Street." Again, it's the same information as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty sixty-one point three, "An Ordinate Zoning of Parcel of Property Located at Twenty-five Oh Three West Thirty-third Street, Panama City, Florida, Having Approximately Point Five Oh Seven Acres, R One, Providing for Severability and Effective Date."
Continuing the public hearing, item ten D is the first reading of ordinance three zero six two point one, "Amending the Future Land Use Map of the City to Reflect a Land Use Designation of General Commercial for the Property Located at Twenty-nine Twenty-three Twenty-nine Twenty-five Stamford Road." As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the planning board recommended denial by a vote of four to one. With that, it's recommendation we cut, conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance.
Hold on a second. We've got someone that wants to address us on this issue. So do it before we do the reading.
I'd also like to add, I forgot since last time, talked to one of the planning board members. We're not, like, I don't, I would love to see the notes of why there's denial, when there's not. I, I know we have notes, but I don't think they're usually get to us before, before this. Who do I get? Does that, does that go through your office?
No, me to address it. You go to address it?
Yes, I can, I'll address it. Because of the short staff in the planning department, they've been running behind on the, the minutes. And so we're, Jawan, who's here, she's working, and we're all working to get caught up. So hopefully that will be provided to you in the future. It's not that they're hidden. It's just that they don't exist yet, except the, of course, the tapes are available, but we will work.
So I could watch a tape?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Honestly, for now. I, I didn't think about watching the, I didn't think about seeing videotape. So.
It's all recorded.
Okay, because it's just kind of confusing sometimes when there's not a lot to the story and what happened and all that good stuff. Okay. Hello again.
Hi, Jennifer Bowman, twenty-seven oh five Woodmere Drive, Panama City. I'm here, I'm also the owner of twenty-nine twenty-three and twenty-nine twenty-five Stamford Road. I'm back again. When we left last year after our denial of changing our zoning, we were told by this committee and Mr. Zimmerman that as an owner of the property, I could go down and open a business license. I did that. I went down, was shut down right in, before I even got to the planning board. They said, no, can't do it at that property. You can't have a business license. I said, I'm the owner. I was told, we have it on tape. If you watch back through the commission meeting, says that we can have one. I am the owner. This is my business. They said, no, we can't have it. So I felt no, I didn't know what else to do. So we are reapplying for rezoning. I have also, since the planning meeting where they denied us, spoke with Mr. Zimmerman again, and evidently there's a little bit of miscommunication between departments because I absolutely, I can do a business license, but if it's denied, there's an appeal process. So there is an active business license in the process. It's on Mr. Zimmerman's desk at the moment. We're just waiting with Mr. Lane leaving and all of the backup and waiting to figure out what we do next. So in the meantime, we are going to ask again for the rezoning of a piece of property built in nineteen seventy-seven, has always been commercial property. I have, on one side, I currently have a business license. I had a business license on the property in question, that I'm trying to get another business license on, but the rules changed in January of twenty nineteen when all of us were cleaning up from the storm. in January of 2019, when all of us were cleaning up from the storm. Laws were being changed and nobody was aware of the situation, so now evidently I can't get a business license, but I'm said, I'm told I can, so I'm not real sure where to go. I'm kind of, I need some direction, I'm asking, I'm almost at this point begging for direction. A couple of the neighbors don't want us to open a business there. There's been a business there since before the houses were built. We have taken super great lengths to upgrade the property, we've re-black topped the property, we restripped the property, we did plant additional plants, we put the gate up on 28 Street, it's so heavy that if somebody comes through that parking lot and hits that, they're going to have car damage. Nobody's getting in and out of that gate. We're working on new lighting and security systems on the property. I'm trying to open a boutique. We are using the building for personal use, it is not open to the public. In the meantime, I am trying to get a business license. I would really like your consideration. Thank you.
Jennifer, is this the same zoning you asked for the first time?
It is. No, the first time we asked for MU3, that was shot down, so then they told us to come back and do general commercial one, and we did. So now we're coming back again for general commercial one.
And someone's got to remind me, these all get mixed up with me. So is this lesser, or is this more?
It's the same, it's the last time, I think.
Less restricted.
GC1 is what we're going for.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Which is the same as what we did the last time.
Oh, I thought you said it was MU.
The very first time, because this is our third time back, so, yeah, here we are.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, but again, this property has no, it's, it's not a house, it is a metal commercial building.
And is the reason she's having a trouble with this business license is because it's not zoned for commercial?
The reason Mrs. Bowman's having trouble is because this is a non-conforming use, it's a commercial, non-conform, legal, non-conforming use in a residential area. And the first time that she applied for a second, there's already one business license there. She applied for a second business license. Mr. Lane determined, and he talked with me about it, that this is an expansion of an existing non-conforming use, which our code doesn't allow. The whole, the whole thing about non-conforming uses, excuse me, is to eventually eliminate them. And so if a building were to get blown down, you have to build a code, which means it has to be conforming. So you couldn't build it back as commercial if the whole building came down. That's not what happened. But what we have here is a potential expansion of the non-conforming use, and that's why it was denied. This was discussed at the planning commission meeting, and I pointed out that the Bowman's could have appealed that decision, they weren't aware of it, so they've reapplied for another business license, and we're going through that, and probably it will be denied, and then probably it will be appealed to the planning commission, who would make the final decision on it.
If the zoning gets changed?
That's not, yeah, I could have just answered your question. Yes.
That's fine, it's good for everybody to understand.
The problem, the problem is that it's zoned residential, if it were zoned commercial, it would not be an issue.
The reason we've got this issue is because when that subdivision was started 18 years ago, they allowed a non-conforming use for plumbing fixtures or whatever kind of stuff that they needed there, because it was so far away to go get supplies, so they said, well, this will be until the subdivision gets built, and then it won't be commercial anymore. And so it was non-conforming use, but then it evolved into other things after that, and that's why we are where we are, and so.
Okay. I just feel really sorry for the residents and the Bowman's.
Yeah.
Never, just kidding, can I ask you a question? And this goes back, so all this is tied into the ordinance that was passed in 2019?
It does.
That has, that ties into. If we make exceptions to that ordinance, does it, does it lessen the, our abilities, our capabilities to enforce in other ways? Does that make sense what I'm saying? So I'm asking is if we start making exceptions on that ordinance, does it lessen our legal position in enforcing it on other properties?
Probably.
No doubt. You're, I mean.
Yeah, I, we'd encourage you, if there is going to be an exception, you'd look at a variance, I don't think variance works for that, we would recommend that you amend the ordinance and figure out a way to tailor it. But what happened in 2019, the primary thing that happened is that it used to be that you could sell a piece of property that was a legal non-conforming use, and that legal nonconformity went with the land. So the property could be sold to somebody else who could then use it also as commercial. In 2019, the commission said, we're not, you know, our goal is to get rid of non-conforming uses, so if you sell the land or if you lease it, you have a transfer of your real estate interest, it is no longer legally non-conforming, it is illegally non-conforming. So that's, that's what created the issue. Not, I have to look back as far as this, this issue of expanding the non-conforming use. I think that's been around a while, but we'll, we'll look.
But the property has not changed hands since we've owned it, so it was the lease that was in place before.
But the non-conforming designation was done prior to their purchase.
It was, the non-conforming was done in 2007, I think.
The non-conforming, I believe it was 2007, and then they changed what it was, because we bought it, when we bought it, it was non-conforming use, and we had two business licenses on the property. And when the one business license went away, it was after that that they changed what non-conforming use as a leaseholder, I would imagine, because we still own the property, so.
Well, let's face it, most of non-conforming, we're happy to do away with. So if we have, if we have something that we have an exception to, technically that's just allowing the zoning change, if that's what we decide to do. But something once and for all at some point, and I guess we have done it once and for all, it keeps coming back.
I feel bad. Would you like to have the first reading?
It's just the first reading now.
For everyone. First reading.
Thank you.
I think y'all like just coming to commission meetings. No, I'm just kidding.
Ordinance number 3062.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of general commercial for parcels of property located at 2923 and 2925 Stanford Avenue, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Item 10E is the first reading of ordinance 3062.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of general commercial one, GC1, for the property located at 2923 and 2925 Stanford Road. It's the same information as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance 3062.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 2923 and 2925 Stanford Avenue, Panama City, Florida, having approximately .434 acres, GC1, providing for severability and effective date.
Continuing the public hearing, is item 10F, is the first reading of ordinance 3063.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for the property located at 4810 Highway 98. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on April 11th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously with the caveat that the applicant provide proof of mailing to development staff services prior to the first city commission meeting. The city attorney's office is reviewed and satisfied with the proof of mailing information which, which was provided by the applicant. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance 3063.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for parcels of property located at 4810 West Highway 98, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item 10G is first reading of ordinance 3063.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of urban residential two, UR2, for the property located at 4810 West Highway 98. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's recommendation that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance 3063.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 4810 West Highway 98, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 4.775 acres, residential two, providing for severability and effective date.
Item 10H is the first reading of ordinance 3065.1, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for the property located at 331 State Avenue, 321 West 23rd Place, and 329 West 23rd Street. This item was reviewed by the planning board on April 11th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance 3065.1, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of urban residential for parcels of property located at 331 State Avenue, 321 West 23rd Place, 329 West 23rd Place, Panama City, Florida, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
That, item 10I is the first reading of ordinance 3065.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of urban residential two, UR2, for the property located at 331 State Avenue, 321 West 23rd Place, and 329 West 23rd Place. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the previous agenda request, and as such, it's the recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance 3065.2, an ordinance zoning parcels of property located at 331 State Avenue, 321 West 23rd Place, and 329 West 23rd Place, Panama City, Florida, having approximately 1.239 acres, R2, providing for severability and effective date.